All right, folks, it's 6:30. Let's get the show on the road.
All right, hi, Richard. Well, Jeff Jennings, if you're out there somewhere, you could come in and sit in with the jam session. We have a spare chair here. Okay, it's 6:31. I'm hereby calling to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of February 5, 2024. This meeting is being held both in a hybrid format that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely via Zoom. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak form to the clerk before your item is called. Only in-person participants may donate or accept donations of time. If you're a member of a formal organization, you get five minutes; otherwise, you get three minutes. And if you're in the organization, you get the five only if nobody else in the organization objects. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to comment on is called. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Leonard?
Here.
Commissioner Pete?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
I'm here.
Thanks, Chair. Madison is absent this evening. Chair Hill?
I am here.
You have a quorum.
Ex-Commissioner Jennings, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, may I have an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and adjourn the meeting in memory of Matt Rapp.
And Richard has a comment, I think?
Yes, Chair. Staff recommends the, and I believe the owner is here this evening for item 5A as well, but continuing that item to a date certain of February 20th. That is the correct date?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Moving item 5A to, what was the date again?
February 20th.
February 20th.
I second it.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pete?
I'm looking at some folks in the audience. Hold on one second.
So this is the Gray Fox project that's been pushed to the 20th?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
I've already called Commissioner Pete. He's affirmed. Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and may I have an approval of the agenda, please?
I think we just did.
Oh, we did that. I'm sorry. Report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on January 26, 2024.
All right, so having no ceremonial presentations, we move on to item 2A, written in oral communications from the public. I don't see any slips in front of me. Do we have, we have none? Do we have any Zoom speakers?
There's one raised hand from Casey McJunkin.
Okay, Casey, can we hear you? Go ahead and speak.
Hi, I'm the owner of Gray Fox, and I was wondering why that 5A was delayed until the 20th?
Well, Richard, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yes, Chair. It's my understanding from talking to our staff that there was an issue raised with the grading plans. And after speaking with the architect about this, who is the applicant, the architect explained, we gave them the opportunity, they could either present to you this evening what they have, or we can put it in the packet to address the concerns. The applicant informed us that they would be amenable to continuing it to a date certain so that the revised grading plan could be included in the packet and the grading quantities.
So that's two weeks away. Any other comments about that? Yeah. All right, are you there?
Yes, no, that's fine. Thank you for the.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks for asking. All right, and no other Zoom speakers?
No, those are the raised hands.
Okay, then we're on to the consent, oh, Planning Commission staff, staff, planning staff comments and, oh, no, actually, we've got the commission first, speakers. Sorry, guys, the rain's a little discombobulating.
I'll go first.
Skylar.
I just want to thank all of the staff in the city and the guys that are working out on the roads. I've seen them out and about, and I think they're doing an incredible job of trying to keep everybody safe. And I just want to say thank them, and Caltrans, and the sheriffs, and the fire department. And I think that we're very fortunate, and Public Works, to have those resources here. So I'm very grateful for that. That's it.
You wanted to make a dedication at the end.
I made that at the beginning.
Oh, okay.
Good evening. Well, that's a nice sight to see a former councilman and planning commissioner down next to Mr. Haney. That's a good thing. We have some really good art out in the hallway. I love that. That's some really good stuff there. Also, the other thing is, for safety and, and yes, everybody has done a good job of taking care of us on our streets and roads the best they can. It's not easy. On the PCH safety, I'll say it again, presence. All you need is a presence. You just need people out there. It just takes people to sit. It's not exciting, or it's not gadgety, it's not gimmicky. It's patrol cars sitting in the medians with the lights on between tuna and Webway, and everybody will see them, and they'll slow down when they see the red lights. You can't help it. You can't help it when the lights are coming off the cliffs or the bluffs on the way in. Other than that, always glad to be here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Drew?
No comments tonight.
Okay, I have several. It appears to be a relatively short evening, so I'll squeeze in a few here. First, for a while, we were getting a draft watermark on the resolutions that said "draft," and that stopped. And I don't know if that was a policy choice or just fell by the wayside. It helps, it helps the public when they see that it's not a done deal. Yeah, sure.
We, our practice is to place draft only on resolutions that are from a prior meeting that were not adopted to indicate the difference between that resolution in the former agenda report and the resolution coming forward to you that evening. So the draft watermark would be for like a continued item where we're bringing forward a resolution to you that evening that includes a recital when the item was continued, but includes also the original agenda packet. So the former one has draft watermarked on it.
All right, I'll have a conversation with Richard about that. I think that's, we can take that offline. As the minutes we are just approved in the, well, we're probably about to approve, reminded me, in November 2020, 2021, I noted that I had read that this commission has a responsibility under state law to annually report on capital improvement plans and public works projects from other local agencies for consistency with the general plan. And I remember asking about that, and I don't remember getting an answer, and there's no answer in the minutes. So, Richard, is that, is that ringing a bell? I've never, I've never heard or seen that report happening here.
I'll be glad to look into it. It, I want, I feel like the Public Works Director provides a report to the council, and that perhaps is what's taking its place, but I'd be glad to look into it.
Maybe that's what, I just remembered it was the Planning Commission's responsibility, so maybe we did delegate that at some point in the deep past. Okay. And then finally, I had asked a question about what is the dividing line between different degrees of rehab, whether it's just for substance abuse, or whether it's, there might be some psychiatric component involved, or somebody might be a hazard to themselves. And, you know, what was the boundary between that and like somebody just having a full-blown prison in their, in a residential neighborhood with ankle bracelets or something like, what, what can people do and not do? And I think Patrick has looked into this and will have a comment for us.
I sure did, Chair Hill. Now, I will preface this, but this is kind of not my area of expertise. I stand behind everything I'm about to say, but, you know, I am not necessarily a seasoned expert in this. And what you were referencing is, of course, the residential care facilities, or people sometimes refer them to sober living homes that appear in residential neighborhoods, plethora of state and federal law on the matter, which kind of culminate in the principle that the city unfortunately is prohibited from passing and enforcing local regulations on banning them, things like that. Getting back to your, your point, the State Department of Healthcare Services has what they call a level of care designation. There's four. The matrices for which they provide are in-depth, complicated, and I spent about 30 minutes trying to understand them and barely understand them by this much. I will say, though, that going to your point about that kind of more imprisonment or carceral component, that is not permitted. Now, of course, societal pressure, whether from your parents or family, or maybe even a court order, I will say, though, in researching and asking, typically those court orders don't mandate a specific facility. So, you know, if I am, I'll use myself as an example, even though I've never been in one, if I go to one and I don't like it, nothing, there's no force of law, they cannot restrain me, I am free to walk out as I, as I deem fit.
So essentially, what you're saying is that all of those facilities must be voluntary, not involuntary?
That is correct, Commissioner Pete, exactly. And now, the one thing that I will say, of course, is, you know, if someone is dealing with a substance abuse issue or other psychiatric issues, there could be events that occur that are disruptive to the normal peace and, you know, and quiet enjoyment of the neighborhood. Our standard noise nuisance ordinances still apply. They're not exempted from those. It's just that we cannot adopt anything specific. And so if there is any fear that someone is being imprisoned or forced there, that is, in my opinion, a criminal issue. Of course, if they want to notify the city, we will, we will, you know, point the pertinent authorities to that. But based off of mine, there is no state license for a residential care facility that allows you to, you know, involuntarily commit someone to it.
Okay, because I, a couple of people had contacted me, and they were concerned that they, in their neighborhood or next door or something, that they had a situation with what they characterized as psychiatric patients who might be a danger to themselves or others. And so that's, they're there voluntarily, presumably, but, you know, if they're, if they're a danger, at what point, and I guess you're implying or stating that really the answer is if you're concerned, you call the sheriff?
I think, the heron lies, one of the challenges that any city faces with residential rehab facilities of any sort is the strain that it puts on your public resources, sheriffs, police, EMS, you know, fire. And I think that that's, I mean, that concern has even been raised by those resources in our community multiple times, and I think it's even raised at the county level. So I think that those things are very warranted, and I would encourage people that if there is one of those next door, and you feel like your peace and things like that in your home are being violent and disrupted on a regular basis, that you notify the city.
Yeah, and try and get them before they get in their Ford Explorer and head down Canyon at 150 miles an hour and go through the intersection right there. So maybe, maybe somebody will listen.
Yeah, there you go.
And one last thing, Chair Hill, that the, you know, the State Department of Healthcare Services does have what appears to be a robust regulatory regime in terms of violations. So should a member of the public have a question about a license, what is and is not allowed? I can't guarantee their responsiveness, but they, they would have the enforcement mechanisms to either fine or even revoke a license, should you have, let's say, a low-intensity residential service license, but you are, you know, providing services more akin to the higher one.
What agency is that that they contact?
The State Department of Healthcare Services.
Okay.
DHCS.
DHCS, all right. Thank you very much. Any other commissioner comments before we go to staff? All right, let's go to staff comments then.
Good evening, commissioners. My only comment for you this evening is that this coming Wednesday, the day after tomorrow, the Coastal Commission will hold their hearing, and they have two items that are related to the city. One item being the adoption of the wireless local coastal program amendment that was submitted by the city. They do have some modifications. And if anyone is interested in understanding what those are, they were discussed at the last city council meeting, and that video is available online. And the other Malibu item that will appear on the Coastal Commission's agenda is there was an appeal filed with the Coastal Commission of the city's decision on a project along inland lane. And that will be also just an item for the commission to hear on Wednesday as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard. All right, with that, we are then on to the consent calendar. Does any, would anyone like to pull anything from it? No? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a second roll call, please?
And then, Rick, I just want to note for the record that Commissioner Pete, he, for his stampede vote, he recused himself from item 3A1, so you can vote on that. But of course, for the, for the minutes, just note he was recused.
Thank you for the clarification. Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, with that, Skylar will be gone momentarily. He'll be back. We are on to section five, new public hearings. And our first item here is 5A. Oh, 5A, I'm sorry, we're continuing that. And we're straight on to 5B. Let's see. Hi, Tyler, do you want to, you've got all the description built into your proposal, or would you like me to read it?
How do you prefer?
I don't care.
Sure, I can, I can read it. I'm here tonight for a call shot, a case planner on this project. It is for a coastal development permit number, coastal development permit amendment Woolsey Fire number 23001, site plan review number 23037, an application to amend coastal development permit Woolsey Fire number 22007 to change the location of the internal stairs leading to the second floor and other minor exterior and interior improvements. And I can go ahead with the staff report. So this project is located in the Malibu Park neighborhood. It's north of Harvester Road. Planning verification was approved in 2021 for the rebuild of the home destroyed in the 2018 Woolsey Fire. In May of '23, the Planning Commission approved CDPWF 22007, which allowed additional square footage, a new pool, some other site improvements. During construction, the applicant made some changes to the home without obtaining permits, mostly due to a neighbor's concern with views. Once it was discovered by the city that the applicant, once it was discovered by the city, the applicant was then told to stop work until the necessary permits were obtained, and that is the application before the commission tonight. The amended scope of work is for the following. It's 138 square foot addition on the first floor due to the change of location of the stairs. It's a new 73 square foot lightwell in the basement. Increase of total development square footage to 4,639 square feet. There's a 273 square foot entry-level deck, a new trellis over the driveway, minor interior/exterior changes, and a site plan review for proportions of the building over 18 feet in height up to 24 feet. Highlighted in yellow here is the square footage totals of the original approval. The blue represents the changes in the proposed project. The total development square footage will be increased, or is proposed to be increased, by about 200 square feet. The new total is 4,639. Here is the site plan. The interior staircase to the second floor will be pushed closer to the second floor area, which opens up some of the building envelope. That was previously in the neighbor's view. Lightwell is also being added, as mentioned, to the basement, and then an on-grade deck is being proposed. The layout of the basement is changing slightly, and the 73 square foot lightwell is added in green there. 138 square feet will be added to the first floor due to the relocation of the staircase. The first floor will now be 3,369 square feet. The highlighted portions to the right show the interior changes. The second floor layout is not changing, but the staircase will be sided closer to the second floor area, which opens up some additional view improvements, as mentioned, for a neighbor. The slide here shows the elevation, and that dotted line, blue line there, is the second floor atrium that second floor atrium that is proposed to be removed. Here's some site photos. Uh, picture one shows the south side of the house and the new trellis over the driveway that's proposed tonight. Picture two shows a zoomed-in photo of the relocated, uh, framed, uh, framing of the stairs. Picture three is a north elevation of the relocated stairs, and the last picture is, uh, the proposed light well. So with that, staff recommends approval of the project, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you, Tyler. Uh, let's have disclosures, please. Dennis?
None.
Skylar?
None.
I drove by, had a look, didn't see any story polls. Um, looks pretty much like we had looked at it before.
I did drive by the site. I did reach out, uh, but didn't receive an email back to the contact that was provided, uh, to visit the site.
Okay, thanks. And Drew?
I ride my bike past the site all the time, and no contact with applicants.
Okay, thank you. Um, now, a quick, quick question of Tyler before we get to the, presumably the applicant will, is, is here, right? And you'll, you'll get your time in a moment. I just, I didn't understand the square footage. Um, it looked like you're adding a net gain of two hundred and eleven, that's what you specified, right? But then what happens to the two hundred and eighty-two square foot at the atrium level, the old staircase, that disappears? It sounds like, really, there's a net minus of seventy-one, is, or am I just...
Oh, yeah, that's a good catch. Um, I think the, um, what we discovered this time around was that the original planning verification didn't account for some square footage. Uh, and so that was kind of totaled into this total to make it more accurate. So this, this more, better reflects, um, the true square footage that was not, I guess, caught on the first CDP.
What wasn't counted the first time?
Um, there was just, I, I don't know exactly where the area was, but there was, um, I think it was maybe some walls, some exterior walls that weren't counted the right way. And so the total brought it, that extra two hundred square feet that you're missing.
So that's what we're being, okay.
Yeah, we're just making sure the record is accurate.
All right, thanks for the clarification. Okay, applicant, if, if you'd like to speak, you've got...
Very, very briefly.
Sure, you've got fifteen minutes. Uh, you can come up to the podium.
I'm hoping that we'll, firstly, thank you guys for your time again, because I know I'm back, and I was only here, I was only here six months ago. Um, this whole, the whole purpose of me being here was solely to reduce the volume of my grand entryway, because as soon as I started to build after your recent approval, obviously I have a very good relationship with my neighbors, and they voiced concerns about the view from their master bedroom. So none of these things you've heard tonight were for any gain or to gain square footage or to do anything. As you brightly pointed out, losing the atrium actually reduced the size of the house, even though there'd been mistakes before that weren't apparent to me. We did it just solely to move everything out of their way so that they could gain their view back. And that's, it would seem no good deed goes unpunished. We, we seem to now have waited six months, haven't been able to put a roof on, have had flooding, damage, everything else. It is what it is. I, you know, should I have done it? Probably not. I did it for moral reasons. I stand by those moral reasons. I kind of hope you guys will see it that way as well. And my neighbors are very kindly here to have their say as well, so that's me done.
Well, thank you. You've got fourteen minutes left if you feel the need to rebut somebody. All right, so, uh, with that, we have public comments here. Uh, it looks like they're probably all neighbors. Why don't we hear first from Thomas Jotka?
That's me, wow, you pronounced it correctly. Pretty good Polish.
And, uh, lucky guess. And then after that, I think it's James Byron, is that what that says?
No, that's me.
Oh, that's you, okay. And then, uh, Mike McCain after that. So Thomas, come on, come up and speak your piece.
Put some photos on your laptops, which I hope you can access. Hey, there's one, great. This was the house it was before. I do not oppose my neighbors rebuilding the thing. This is more about the procedure, how this stuff is done, because this was like the first I got wind of this even happening was apparently the second one for this change. I never got the first one for the change from seventeen hundred square feet to forty-four, hundred, four thousand four hundred square feet. So could you please change things so maybe you send neighbors registered letters that they have to sign for? Because many of us are no longer living in the neighborhood because we have to live in other places after the fire. So we're not getting the Malibu Times. We're not going to see it that way. We need to have some kind of like thing. Once again, I don't oppose this. Next one is just showing you what the house used to look like. Oh, the next one is like the neighbor next door, which is, uh, the thing to the side. The McKeens are the ones right behind it. The one next door is a property that was sold last April. So it would be nice to have their comment on the change since it possibly affects them. The third one is the, what you're looking at now, the two thousand seventeen thing. Thank you, Los Angeles County Assessor Portal. Please, everybody use this. You just have to blow up a hundred and fifty percent and you get pictometry, wonderful satellite imagery from two thousand and two to today throughout the city. So for instance, the next one is just showing potential sightlines for the house next door, which could be impacted, I don't know. The next one is just the current construction, which you can see, it's a little lower down. The next one is the Google Maps, which just shows the old footprints versus the new ones. I suggest using this kind of stuff for future public inquiries, because the last thing is, the next picture is the house which is now coming up next to mine, which used to be five thousand square feet, and at least ten feet lower, and now there's my ocean view, which somehow they've just started building this. And I expect to get some sort of notice like this about this structure, which, use, use the last photo, which now has seven-foot setbacks from their retaining wall. So I'm using this opportunity to say, there's a bit of Wild West going on in the community, and there's only one enforcement officer for the Coastal Commission and one enforcement officer for the city of Malibu, and things are perhaps sliding by. I know that you're very busy people, but if we don't speak up, you're not going to know that these things are happening. Uh, am I done? Two minutes less?
Four seconds.
Four seconds, great.
All right.
Batter up.
Thank you, Mr. Jotka. And now we have, um, I said your name already, Mike, Mike McCain.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Welcome, welcome. It's, uh, kind of nice to be here when it's not my project. I've been here before on, on, in the, in the grill, but, uh, we were lucky enough to get rebuilt after the fire about two years ago. So, uh, we got a little ahead of the curve, only because the house was actually brand new before the fire. So, uh, we did it all over again, and uh, the house in front of us that Mr. Byford owns, uh, was a single-story, and when they started rebuilding it, he came to me to say, uh, we're going to do a two-story, but we're going to arrange it so it won't be blocking your straight-ahead ocean view. And I said, great, just keep me in the loop, and, uh, we're all good with that. And fortunately, we're, elevation is about, we're about forty feet higher, roughly, so, uh, the sightline is not impacted too much unless they get a four-story house there. But, uh, the way it is now, um, what triggered this was when they were doing the construction, they, they had a crane set for vertical, uh, steel columns, um, in there. And I thought, well, that looks a little odd, and I didn't see any of that in the preliminary stuff. So I called the city, and they said, well, that was for the, uh, foundation for the first floor. And I said, no, it's something a little different. Well, Mr. Byford got ahold of me and he said, well, let's talk about this, uh, kind of surprise you, they put the columns in before I realized they were going to be done. So, uh, anyway, he was nice enough to come to my house, stand on the front porch, and acknowledge that, yeah, the two easterly columns, uh, especially with a glass enclosure, would be kind of impairing our, our view. So he kindly took two of them down, moved the stairway to the right, so we don't have a giant glass atrium right in our front, front, uh, front yard. So he did this, uh, to accommodate a neighbor and be neighborly, and it's kind of held him up for six months now. And, um, I'm just happy that we can get a move in and, and get him done, because, uh, after five and a half years, we're kind of tired of, uh, construction going on too, like everybody else.
Talk around.
Yeah. So, anyway, I'm endorsing this project the way it is now. He did it to benefit us, and, uh, I felt like I had to come and support him in that effort. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCain. Do, do we have any speakers, uh, online?
There are no raised hands.
Okay. Uh, well, Mr. Byford, I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name before. Any other comments? You're, you're good?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Um, all right, well, with that, let's bring it back up, close the public hearing portion and bring it back up to the Commission. Um, I, I wonder just off the bat, Richard, if could you offer some explanation or solace, or even for the neighbor who is concerned that, I mean, basically, we don't have in front of us an approval of the whole project. This, this is, it was, it's been approved, for better or worse, whether it was missed or wasn't missed. But is, is there any sort of recourse they would have at this point? It's, the horse has left the barn, right?
You're talking about a different, I think that, was that photo, the photo that you showed, that was of a different house. That's not his house.
Yeah, that's not his house, that's...
It's a different project.
Next to our house, that's a different project. I can wait for that, if it ever shows up, or they may have just lied to you.
Hang on, Chair. Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, if...
That's a separate thing.
So that, well, I'm sorry, okay, so the house that, that we're just seeing built up right in front of his view was a different house?
Correct.
Okay.
We're listening, thank you.
Yeah, all right, thank you. So in that case, I guess we don't need to address anything here. But other than the point that this all has been previously approved, and we're just dealing with the margin now. So...
For now.
Comments for now? Yeah, go ahead.
I, um, I don't really have any concerns with the project. I think that, if anything, it should be celebrated in the sense that here you have a neighbor being neighborly, and I think that's one of the most important things of our community. So I don't know really what else to say to that, other than I'm stoked that you guys have good neighbors, and I think it's very wise of you, Mr. Byford, as a builder, to talk to your neighbors. I wish more people did that.
Huge.
So that it didn't end up in a courtroom. But, uh, so along those lines, I would make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Dennis, okay, um...
And I know that that's kind of early in it, but I just, I don't know if you have more comments or whatever we can discuss, but I, I think that we should celebrate that.
Sure, I, I agree. Motion on the table. Um, Drew, do you have any comments?
I completely agree with what Skylar just said. It's great to see neighbors working together.
Okay, I, I agree. I have one small thing that Tyler maybe, or, this might even be for Patrick. The, the geotechnical review had a, uh, condition that all structural revisions to be observed and documented in the field by project geotechnical consultant. That work has all been done now, correct? So the question, and I guess this is the question for Patrick, is there any, uh, legal requirement to make that a condition of the resolution, just as a formality?
That's normal, yeah, that's normal work.
It's, it's, well, this particular condition that, that Geotech put in is not a norm, not typically in their, their things. They, they saw something that they don't usually call out. And I, all I'm suggesting is that from a legal standpoint, if they're calling that a necessary condition, then maybe it needs to be in the resolution. Is that...
Yeah, so I, I believe I understand what you're saying, that what is the...
It's a kind of a clerical question, yeah.
What is the, what is the need for this condition if it is, in theory, already been satisfied?
And if it's already been built, yeah.
And so I will defer to Tyler. I, I don't want to speak out of turn. My limited understanding of the project is I wouldn't think there would be any more geotechnical work, but I can't speak authoritatively one way or the other on that.
It really is a legal question, because it could be, you know, five years down the road, there's some geotechnical issue that a neighbor calls, claims, and they, they say, oh, you, this should have been blah, 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 and, you know, so it's, it's more of a record-keeping thing. Yeah, Drew?
I was gonna say, shouldn't the building inspectors be doing that? Having the consultants come out and do follow-up inspections to certify the work that's already been done after the fact?
So, suggesting that the condition requested by Geotech is sort of redundant in that regard, that that would be covered anyway?
I think so, yes.
So that would be your reading, too?
Yeah, so, so I, I understand the issue. Um, I would think that, yes, if, kind of a belt and suspenders approach, I, I can't see much harm in, in keeping it in, um, notwithstanding the fact that it does seem, it may be a bit redundant.
Well, is, can we, could we just put it in and not have this have to come back to us two weeks from now? Just say, we're good, you know, add that condition, and when I sign it, it'll be in there? It just, it just, you know, it bothers me if Geo says, we want this, and I, I don't see it in the resolution.
And, and so, Richard and Tyler, I may have to kind of rely upon you guys here for more of the practical component here.
Um, it was, I do see it now. Adrian just showed me the, um, geotechnical review sheet. So we can definitely add it if you want. We have like a, a standard Geo, uh, condition that we add, which is like, Geo is going to have to review the final plans, and, and all the recommendations from their project geologists will have to be incorporated into the plans. Uh, but if you want us to add that as an additional protection, I don't see an issue.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not wanting, I'm, I'm just asking, is this something we need or not?
It's going to be required one way or the other, but if you...
Okay.
Want to add it for additional clarity.
All right, then, then no need to rock the boat. I just, you know, saw something and wondered about it. All right, other comments?
That's what we're here for.
That's what we're here for.
My other comment is that would be awesome if we get a roll call, if that's okay with you.
I'm, I'm on board with that, too. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, folks. We are on to five C.
What was the name of the...
Mr. Jotka, I would just, you know, you raised some concerns about the project that was in front of you that's unrelated to this house.
Yeah.
I would really like if you could maybe just send us an email or send the Planning Department an email.
Sure.
Um, you know, if you have some...
We can file a complaint as well with the city.
Okay.
We will send you an...
Well, no, if you've already done that, I just want to make sure that you've taken those, those steps. And that, obviously what you showed us seemed...
Within thirty-five seconds.
Very alarming, and I appreciate you doing that, especially considering that it looks like it was a fire rebuild, and all of a sudden something appeared that you seemed not be aware of.
Our neighbors are equally sort of like, what's that behemoth, which is now up on the hill?
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you for your concern. Thank you for telling them it had nothing to, they're good.
All right, for the record, for the record, we have a member of the public talking about a future potential project. Um, it's, it's not really in front of us now, that...
Training can discombobulate everyone.
Okay, so we are now on to five C. This is, um, Tyler, you read it last time, I'll read it this time. This is for coastal development permit number twenty-two dash zero four zero, an application to restore a wetland buffer that was disturbed due to unpermitted weed abatement. Um, let's see, I guess we can go ahead with the staff report then, please, Tyler.
All right, thank you, Chair Hill, members of the Planning Commission. Next item tonight is, uh, as mentioned, a proposal to restore a wetland buffer modified without the benefit of permits. Uh, the project is located in the Civic Center area just north of PCH and to the west of Stewart Ranch Road. The property is often referred to as the Smith Parcel. The property is undeveloped, and a map wetland is present at the site. In twenty-nineteen, unpermitted weed abatement took place without permits. The city issued a code violation in twenty-twenty. The new and current owner of the, uh, property purchased it in twenty-twenty-one and submitted this application to restore the wetland buffer area in order to resolve the code enforcement violation. Uh, the, the applicant submitted a habitat restoration and monitoring plan, HRMP, which was reviewed by the city's biologist. The final description of the restoration is shown here and includes the removal of non-native and invasive species and weeds, installation of low-growing native container plants, and a mix of native seeds, and includes a ten-year maintenance and monitoring plan. The site plan here shows the boundaries of the wetland as delineated by the applicant's biologist. The restoration area, which is the wetlands a hundred-foot, uh, buffer, is indicated in green. This map here shows the historic wetland delineations that have been done on the property. The green, blue, and orange opaque lines at the south, or areas at the south, represent the applicant's wetland delineation, while the yellow and pink lines represent delineations that were conducted in nineteen ninety-eight and twenty-eighteen respectively by Edith Reed. Uh, staff has received some concerns from the public... Staff has received some concerns from the public regarding the correct boundaries. The applicant's most recent wetland delineation that was conducted in November of 2023 was determined to be the most accurate by the city's biologist, who also took into consideration the historically mapped wetlands. So with that, staff recommends approval of the project, and we're available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Disclosures, please, Dennis?
None.
I have no disclosures, but I'm driven by, over the course of my life, many, many times.
Yeah, I went to elementary school at Webster and drove by this with a nice view looking in 180 days a year for years. I recall the whole area, too, I've been marshy then. I also, I do my grocery shopping often at Ralph's, and often at night, I hear the frogs going across the highway, and of course, the frogs are going now, no surprise. Drew?
No disclosures.
All right, so we have an applicant, what's the, who's representing the?
The applicant team, Ed Mountford and Tony Baumkamp, are available to us virtually this evening.
Available for?
Presentation.
Are they remote? Are they on Zoom?
They're remote.
They're remote, so they do want to make some speech, or they're just for questions?
I talked to him earlier, I think he's just available for questions.
Okay, is that correct? Let's ask them.
It's probably, yeah, I'd ask them.
Guys, can you hear us? Can we hear you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is Ed Mountford, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. I had planned to be there with you tonight, but unfortunately, the weather, I live in Huntington Beach, so getting to Malibu today was gonna be a challenge, so I let Tyler know that I'd participate virtually. But I am, I am the agent for the, for the property owner, and we have no formal presentation. I'm joined by Mr. Tony Baumkamp, who is with Glenn Lucas and Associates. They have, for many years, been doing delineations on, wetland delineations on this property, and we wanted to let you know that we agree with the staff report and the conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll have you online there, and if we have any questions, we'll ask you. Okay, with that, we have two public speakers. We have Jan or Jan Ravlik?
Yes.
Come on up, you get three minutes, and after that will be Jefferson Wagner.
Hi, I'm just gonna read what I submitted to you with the photos.
Oh, you submitted the photos, okay, great, thank you.
I took those, most of those were taken today, and you can see all the wildlife in the water, the white herons, the mallard ducks eating and swimming, that was of today. And there's other photos of all the other animals that I've observed, so. Chair Hill and members of the planning commission, please restore the seven-acre escha that has been disced over the years. As members of the planning commission, you know more than everyone else that Malibu is like no other place on earth. The air is fresh, the sunsets are world famous, literally, and the people are unique breed. There's no dress code in Malibu. Visitors to our town never forget us. They get a visible light in their eyes as they recall the serenity and the connection with nature that is present throughout this natural ecosystem. It's a precious resource and a gift from our Creator that we are gratefully grateful for every day. We, the residents of Malibu, have the responsibility to treasure this place and to protect it. As residents of central Malibu, we are witness to the incredible beauty that permeates every inch of the particular seven acres of the escha design designated wetland property in question. I know from walking by it daily, this land is a marsh, it is a sacred biome. This is why the previous owners, the Malibu Bay Company, did not elect to include in phase two of the sewer sewage hookup. What we have seen on this land is priceless. In the early morning, the ground is covered with a cool and spooky fog that has never been seen anywhere else in our travels. As the sun rises from behind the hills, the grass sparkles with endless dewdrops that birds and butterflies stop to lap up. In the yucca plants, we have seen brilliantly colored wild parrots, finches, hummingbirds, blue jays, sparrows, and the red-tailed hawk that nests in the trees of the wetland and feed their young in the fertile ground. We've seen white owls with giant eyes swoop from the wetlands to our balcony to stare at us inquisitively as they flutter their wings. When it rains, as it did this past weekend, the entire seven-acre property floods, and the frogs begin a symphony that sounds like a bayou song on what we have affectionately termed Lake Malibu. The mallard ducks and the white heron gracefully fish on the shores. Every day, we see brush rabbits, California ground squirrels, foxes weaving in and out of the palms and scrubs. At night, mountain lions and coyotes prowl and howl at the moon while bats dart across the starry sky. All this and more will disappear like it has in so many other places in this once pristine world. Any development near these wetlands will disrupt, destroy, dislodge this entire ecosystem.
Okay.
Just one more. Be it from excess light, sound, chemical pollution, or the relentless digging of the land, this wetland ecosystem will fracture and die. Since these seven areas.
That's your three minutes.
Escha, the entire seven acres should be restored.
That's it, thank you very much, yeah.
Okay. Anyway, I'm just concerned about the, the areas that they've said is the wetlands and not the wetlands.
We understand, thank you. Jefferson?
Good evening, Commissioners, Jefferson Wagner, 23901 Civic Center Way. I have two condominium, one condominium there, one townhome. I do enjoy this wetlands down below us, over the 55 years of time that I've been in the Civic Center area with my business and my properties. That enjoyment has been through ball fields, as maybe you remember it, and prior to when Skyler, Skyler was even born, the hering were, the heron were landing there and eating the frogs that you enjoy. Overall, the, the property owner does have rights to develop, and we understand that as former council member for eight years. We also have to protect that environment that makes these properties so valuable. This is in the Pacific Flyway, that's why the last speaker spoke about so many different types of birds that habitat that area. It's important for us as a city to commit ourselves, and this planning commission to commit itself to protecting these property values so that we can maintain property rights and environmental rights. So I ask you, as a commission, to recognize the letter that Joe Drummond sent from the Malibu Township Council, a one-pager, trying to keep it as brief as possible. The idea here is to restore that habitat as the proponent has proposed, but to the original, at least minimum, three acres, therefore giving some acreage for the Smith property to be developed in the future, because we all have the rights, as I mentioned earlier. The most invasive plant down there right now is the castor bean and the pterocina spurge. Those have to be hand-pulled. You cannot disc that type of invasive plant. So I encourage you that if you move forward with this plan, adopt the three-and-a-half-acre minimum, and work forward with everybody on this, as the last people you had seen on 5B. People can work together. I encourage you to work together and restore this to what it was. Thank you very much, Commissioners, have a good evening.
Thank you, Jefferson. Do we have any Zoom commenters?
There's two raised hands, first is Ryan Embry.
And who else?
Joe Drummond.
Okay, Ryan? Can we hear you? Ryan? We're waiting for you. There you are.
I wanted to say that I've driven by here for 39 years myself, and that the, as a property owner at 23901 Civic Center Way as well, we have witnessed this wetland in at least twice the size as purported to be in the report before you. So, what is proposed is a vastly inadequate restoration plan, and in so doing, if you were to certify this report or approve this permit, you would be condoning a minimization of the historic wetlands, and that would be a huge mistake. Not only would it be an inadequate restoration, it would not acknowledge the historic boundaries of this wetland, and those boundaries are highly documented by third-party sources, including the flyover by Los Angeles County tax assessor, their aerial photos, imagery after the fires of 1993, 1996, the U.S. Geological Survey, this property's been, I think, included in the Peter Walshell's report, Stone Environmental, the underground water modeling studies, federal emergency management agencies, and the, the owner, the report by the Malibu Bay Company on this exact same parcel. So if it weren't for the 200 residents in my complex, the 28 units that have a direct view of this property and take photos of it regularly for real estate marketing or personal use, it would be a travesty to consider adopting this inadequate plan. So I'd urge you to not approve the permit and send it back to drawing board for a reality check, and at the minimum, continue the item, because the information before you is incorrect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Joe Drummond, are you available?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Eddie, I'm sorry, I'm not there, I'm actually in Miami with my girlfriends, and I've been doing bird watching here, and I am an avid bird watcher personally in Malibu, and that's why we have to protect this escha property. I am here speaking as the president of the Malibu Township Council, who has been advocating for responsible development since 1947, and we ask that you deny this proposed restoration plan, because the wetland area on the Smith parcel is actually much larger than the 1.69-acre Lupus wetland delineation. The commission should direct the owner to restore at minimum 3.4 acres, but really, I agree with Jan, it should be seven, the whole seven acres, which was clearly delineated by the Malibu Bay Company in 2002. Wetland areas do not get smaller in size, they just go dormant when there is not enough rain. The illegal weed disking lightly caused the invasive plants to overtake the natives that Jefferson was talking about, and a long drought caused visible reduction in the wetland that, which can replenish itself back, especially now with all this rain. The hydrophytic salt grass is still there, showing a historical wetland is still present. With the construction of the deadly PCH, we actually lost an adjacent lagoon there, as in that report I noticed, so that is terrible. We don't want to keep paving over paradise. At least this wetland is still there, so we have to preserve this and protect the environmentally sensitive habitat, but, and all its wildlife, and birds, and frogs, et cetera, and prevent any development on the, at least the 3.4 acres of this property, which should be designated protected wetland. Don't let these people come in from wherever Huntington Beach or wherever they are to try and develop all of this natural, the minimal natural resources we have less, this left. This honors and follows the vision emission statement of Malibu, so thank you for your serious consideration of this matter. It means these decisions are gonna be very important. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Parker, no other, no other online speakers?
Yeah, there's no other raised hands.
In that case, the applicant, let's give them a chance to rebut or respond in whatever way they'd like to any comments they've heard tonight. Can you open their mic for them, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Ed Mountford. Yeah, I'm gonna ask Tony Baumkamp from Glenn Lucas and Associates to, to respond to those questions, or excuse me, comments. One comment I would like to make is that this is not a, a proposal for any development, this is a proposal to go in and create native habitat in a, in a buffer zone around a wetland. The buffer, buffer zone area was illegally disc by the previous property owner, and this property owner is, the new property owner is going in and proposing a, to create native habitat within that, within that buffer area. But I'll let, I'll let Tony get into more details about that.
Okay, Tony?
Hi, Commissioners. Thanks. So we, I'm senior biologist with Glenn Lucas Associates, and just, just so you know my background, I've been doing wetland delineations in Southern California for over 30 years. I was an adjunct faculty member at Cal State Fullerton, where I taught a graduate-level course on wetlands from 1994 to 2022, so, you know, almost 28 years there, and so I'm well-qualified to, you know, to delineate wetlands in Southern California. We started work on this site originally in 2018, and we did the initial wetland delineation during 2018. It was a below rainfall, you know, lower-than-average rainfall year. 2019, you'll remember, was above-average rainfall, and all of this is covered in detail in our report. So, and Tyler's reviewed it, I know Courtney has reviewed it. 2019, we came back out and we redelineated it and set a boundary, and then, you know, the illegal disking was, was done, the project kind of sat, you know, not the project, but just the property sat there, and then we were asked to reengage with it, with the new owner here recently, and so we came back out again in 2023, which I think everyone remembers was a very large rainfall year, and, and there was a lake out there, there's no question, and we were out a number of times monitoring the extent of the water, the ponding, and then in June, we came back out, you know, while there was still water there, and we, we revisited the delineation that was done in 2019, and, and we actually expanded the area of wetland based on a number of, you know, factors. We look at the vegetation, the soils, and the hydrology, and, and in Malibu, following the Coastal Act, you, we use a single parameter to determine the, the maximum extent of the wetland, which is what we did. So it was a one parameter wetland delineation, as, again, stipulated in both the City of Malibu's requirements and in the Coastal Act. And so the boundary we set, you can compare with, for example, the National Wetland Inventory, which has a smaller wetland than what we delineated, and, and the, the previous delineation, the first delineation that was mentioned by Edith Reed way back in the early 2000s, she repudiated that in her 2018 delineation and said it was not correct. And again, that's all documented in our delineation report. Edith delineated it in 2018 based on two data points. Between our 2019 and 2023, we have over 50 data points. So we did a very, very careful and detailed delineation, and so, I don't know if you have any other questions. The one other thing I would add in terms of the hydrology out here, as, as you, you might, may be aware, there's a curb cut on Civic Center Way, and the water drains into this site, but when it reaches a certain elevation, it now then drains to the east along Civic Center Way to a storm drain that was recently upgraded by the city. So the, the amount of water that can collect there is now completely controlled by the storm drain, which was upgraded by the city at the corner of Civic Center and Stewart. So, you know, there's a certain limit that the water can reach, and then it drains. And again, that, that, our delineation follows very closely with the extent of the water that collects there. And again, we monitored it all last year during the wet season, so we're pretty confident in, in our delineation. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I think that's, you know, again, Courtney has reviewed it and has concurred with us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Okay, thank you, Mr. Baumkamp. You'll be there. I'm sure we'll have lots of questions, or some, anyway. I think as a way to kind of keep this organized, a good way to approach it would be to ask any sort of technical questions we might have, clarifications up front, and then split the discussion into at least two categories. One being the delineation, and how is that done? And what should that be? And then, once we have an idea about that, then we can move on and talk about the restoration, the techniques, or are they doing it right, or what are they proposing? Does that make sense, right? The size, and then how are we addressing it? How are they addressing it? So, questions, technical questions? Clarifications?
Yes, I'd like to go first. Director Malika, this property, as I'm seeing now, it is separate from where the Edison Yard was. Is that correct? That's not the same piece?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Other? So it's not something where you just draw a line through it? Basically, if, I don't know, Richard or Adrian or Tyler, if you want to shed a little light on how the study is done to specifically delineate the wetland. The way that I understand it, multiple borings and soil testing, and that's how we're getting this line that kind of jiggers across there, that based on that testing, that's what is the wetland. And that's even larger than what was initially thought. Is that correct?
Yes, it's my understanding that the way these studies are conducted, it's not just what you see. That the actual wetland area, as our biologist described it to me, is determined through soil borings because the wetland has the soil associated with a wetland has a certain type of soil. And so the purpose here is to find the extent of where there's a change in the soil. That's what the report looks for. And the edge of the wetland is where you see that soil that has that characteristic. And what I've noticed over the years, when I went through the various reports we had on file, were that there were no constant number of borings, if you will, across all the reports. And so, yes, some reports had larger areas and other reports had smaller areas. However, what we noticed was in those larger reports, conclusions were drawn with fewer data points. So if you will, the accuracy was not as great. This report, yes, it zigzags in and goes in, goes out, and there's convex, concave things. However, that is because, if you will, the level of detail of this report is greater than previous reports. And I just want to reiterate that the decision made by this council or this commission tonight, it is for the purposes of the restoration. It is not for development. When development comes before this commission or if it goes before the city council, there will be an opportunity to revisit this issue again. And also, as we mentioned and I believe referenced, there are a number of reports on this property. If somebody comes in at a later time to develop this property, you know, if they came in a couple of months from now, we'd probably use this report. And then it would be before you guys again. But if they come back in a number of years, they're going to have to update that report. Wetlands, ESHA, all that, it's a living system. It moves.
So, I was going to say, like, that's the hard thing for me to understand, you know? It's not hard for me to understand, I very much, I think, understand it, but it's sort of a moving line, right? It's like the mean-high tide line with the ocean, right? It's changing constantly, you know? You have a wet year, you have a dry year. What delineates the situation whereby when you're drawing this line, you do it during a wet season or not a wet season? And then how does, like, you know, one point on the map, if I did it in the summer? I guess I don't really understand, does the soils testing go down five feet? Does it go down 50 feet? Does the disking of the property affect that in a way that, like negatively? I just, I kind of want to wrap my head around that a little bit.
I would recommend, on the depth, asking the applicant. I'm not, that's one question I did not ask our biologist, was how far down do they go?
They did find some roots at 11 feet, I recall reading. So I don't know if they went much further than that, but that...
Okay, so I mean, okay, if it's, if I could ask, I forget the gentleman's name that's on the phone.
There's Tony Baumkamp.
Tony, how far down do those borings go?
Our soil pits generally go to about 18 to 24 inches. We're only required to go to 16 inches according to the wetland manual that we use, which is the Army Corps of Engineers Arid West Supplement for wetland delineations in, you know, in the arid west. The issue is, is where the soils matter is in the upper 12 inches.
So, but the soils, the soils in the upper 12 inches would get gravely disturbed and changed if you were disking the property. That's kind of where I have this challenge of understanding that. Here, they've gone in, whether the property owner knew or didn't know they were or weren't supposed to do that, that was done. And how do we know that that wetland wasn't significantly larger than it is right now? And somehow that was changed when that disking was done?
Yeah, so there's two factors there. So the first, and you are correct, constant disking of soil can disrupt the indicators. What we look for in the soil, because what happens when the soils are saturated for long periods of time, the iron in the soil precipitates into clumps and forms what are called redox features. And if a soil, if a site is disced, you know, once a year, those redox features will still be, will still be very visible in the soil. It takes constant disking, like you would do in a farm field, before you actually start to destroy those.
So it would be, it would, your expertise, that what was done here disking-wise would not have affected it? Or would have affected it?
Would not, would not.
How certain are you of that?
I'm quite certain because I, again, I've been doing this for 30 years, and I've delineated all sorts of sites. So the hydroic soils would not have been, you know, would not have been measurably affected by a once-annual disking that they were doing. Now, having said that, the outer edge of the delineation was based actually on the vegetation. If you look at the data sheets, there's, again, there's about 50-some-odd data sheets to look at.
Yep, there's a lot of them.
The actual delineation edge was primarily based on the vegetation. We didn't actually find hydroic soils out as far as the edge of the hydrophytic vegetation. The hydroic soils ended before we got to the edge of the salt grass most primarily, which is probably about 20, 30 feet inside the wetland boundary.
If you looked at figure two, which is on page three of 12, it's a, I don't know if you have that in front of you or not, but how far...
Are you talking about, are you in the delineation report?
No, I'm in the, I'm actually just the second page of the staff report.
Oh, okay.
There's, it's your figure, or a figure from Glen Lucos. How, where that blue line is, and you're referencing that 20 or 30 feet in, are you saying that it's from the edge of the green? Or are you saying it's inside in the blue wetland area that you're referencing?
Anyway, I'm sorry. I had to figure out.
If there's a better one that you can direct me to, I would be happy to look at that.
And maybe we could, staff, we could get a graphic, a map, or some diagram of the wetland delineation, the boundaries.
Tyler, if you have one of the figures from the, well, the one figure from the J.D. report, which shows the combined 2019 and 2023, that might be the best one to show.
Is that one better?
Historically mapped wetlands area?
That one with all the different counters is probably helpful, yeah.
Yeah, that's the one. And then it might be helpful at some point just to show the data points that we show on the delineation report, because that's helpful as well. But...
If you're going to this drawing here and you're going outside what is the yellow line, right? You're saying that you have no indicators that there's any wetland above that yellow line at all? And no surface area, surface brush or anything?
Correct. I mean, our delineation is, again, this is, it's a combination of the bright green, the blue, and the kind of tan color, or orange's tan. You combine those three, that's the delineation that we came up with in the 2019 and 2023, you know, field efforts. So the yellow line was the 2002, I think it was? Is that 2002? Put my glasses on.
The yellow one is the 1998 read.
1998.
And the pink is the 2018 read.
Right, right, okay. So the pink one was based on two data points, which is why...
We're going to throw that one out.
Yeah, why we, you know, we did between the two over 50 data points. And the yellow one was done in about two wetland delineation manuals prior. And Edith Reed, who, you know, did the pink line and did the yellow line initially, she even said that she, that was wrong and it wasn't accurate based on the current science and the way it's done. Ours is based on, you know, on the most recent guidance and manual from the Army Corps of Engineers. That's what we use.
But before we get really into the weeds, so to speak, on the delineation, a couple more sort of threshold questions. Just to clarify with Richard, in terms of just the context here, there is or isn't any pending development application on this parcel?
I am not aware of any development applications pending for it. It's the only application before us in the city is for the restoration.
Okay. And, well, let me ask this before I go to Drew. Legal question. Why, if it's illegal to clear-mapped ESHA, to disk it, et cetera, why are we being asked to restore only the wetland portion and not the entire ESHA? What is the legal distinction that says we have to restore one illegally cleared area but not another?
So we don't have evidence that ESHA has been disced beyond the wetland and its buffer.
We have photographs submitted by Pat Healy very clearly showing disking occurring, I would say, at least halfway up the parcel. So substantially further than these, like, maybe as high as the top of the yellow curve.
But when was that? Correct, however...
Every year up to 2019. Like, every year. And so, but it was originally ESHA. I mean, when I was going to school back when, it was a big, you know, sort of jungly brush, et cetera.
So, there is a definition of what is ESHA and what isn't ESHA.
Yeah.
A wetland is ESHA. And from the edge of the wetland area, the riparian habitat, you go out 100 feet. And so what you have before you here is the edge of the riparian, and then you have the 100-foot buffer. So that...
But, but... The buffer's not on the drawing. But the whole parcel was mapped ESHA, and LIP 4.3.C.1 says, "Any area mapped as ESHA shall not be deprived of protection as ESHA's..." blah, 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 "on the basis that the habitat has been illegally removed, degraded, or species that are rare." So I'm just trying to figure out, why are we drawing a distinction?
The LIP goes on further to say that while you have mapped ESHA, "A onsite investigation shall determine the extent of ESHA." And so that's what you end up with here, is that you have site-specific information. So the city uses its ESHA maps as guidance and then requires a site-specific study. And so that is how we've arrived at this. If the commission does not agree with the site-specific study that is within your purview, but those are the criteria which the city uses based on the LIP.
So if I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounds like you're saying you did the observation onsite, but you're not necessarily looking at much historical record of what was there prior to all the disking?
So we did do historical research based on previous wetland delineations. The city biologist did look at that. She looked at historical photographs. And I believe also there was some analysis of that in the current report that was provided to you with this project. It's our standard that whenever we have an ESHA property, we ask for the historical research so that our biologist could then take a look at that. And do keep in mind, there's also a requirement in the LIP which requires a five-year update of the ESHA maps based on the site-specific inventories and these types of biological reports. So do keep in mind that those maps are meant to be updated based on what you see before you hear.
So we've seen photographs showing that the disking goes pretty far up the parcel. And I know that it's gone on for years. I've seen it going. And it's almost like you're saying, well, if they got away with it for five years, we don't need to consider what happened older than five years ago, or...
That's not at all what I'm saying.
Okay, I'm sorry. But...
What I have said multiple times now is that we've used historical research, and we do look at this. And there is a criteria in the LIP for how you do this. And that criteria has been applied to this. If the commission disagrees with that criteria, and I want to say that some of those reports, I feel like there might be one from the late '90s, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? '97? Yeah, I think '91 or '92. Okay. So there are a number of years worth of reports. So, once again, it's not so much the pretty picture here. It's more driven by site-specific analysis through, as discussed, soil borings to find the edge of that riparian habitat. And then, you know, the code requires a 100-foot buffer area. That's what meets ESHA. However, once again, if the commission here feels that it should be larger, that is within your purview.
Well, I'm still a little fuzzy about the distinction between the wetland ESHA versus the standard chaparral upland ESHA. It seems like we're not caring as much about that, the fact that it's been cleared illegally over the years.
I think he's told you like nine times.
No, he's, well, he keeps referring to the wetland and its buffer and its boundary, but much of the parcel has been illegally cleared.
For me, what the challenge is here is that had that clearing not been going on, would that ESHA have been expanded? Yes or no? That's what I think the crux of the issue is here. That's why I'm not comfortable with that boundary at 100 feet. And I would like it to be larger than that. Because I think that if that, if that disking had not gone on, those plants and that habitat likely would have flourished as it had before humans effed it all up.
Let's hear from Drew. He's been...
I do have two questions that maybe kind of give us a little bit of a roadmap on this that maybe staff could help me clarify. We're not actually doing a mapping right now. I do think it's a good idea to maybe try to expand it. Just, I'm open to that. But we're here to clear up a code enforcement complaint, I think. And that I need to verify with staff, are we binding ourselves to any future development by doing this right now?
That's for Adrian or Tyler?
Or...
Or Patrick, yeah.
Sure. And so I believe I'm echoing something that Director Malika said is that, you know, temporally, if someone came back in six months, would this, whatever boundary you guys decide, I would say would be persuasive, not dispositive. So you guys would have to, you know, reckon with that, depending on any future evidence in the record.
We may have a lake, though, if it keeps going the way it's been going the last couple of days.
Commissioner Pete, you raise a very good point. The longer, the further out that development application for future development comes in after tonight's decision, should there be one, in my opinion, the...
More likely, there's additional study.
There's, exactly. So I would say, I would, you know, from a policy perspective, it would be up to you guys, how strict you want to maintain compliance with tonight's decision. From a legal perspective, I would say you guys are free to change it, you know, at a future decision.
I am open to changing it, just for comfort level.
Changing?
The boundary of the outlying ESHA area for more than 100 foot.
One thought that struck me is that, and there are a lot of factors here, so I don't want to be too married to this idea. But you mentioned high tide. But you mentioned high tide. And there's a similar concept here. We're talking about an environment that is in flux and that some some years it has, the wetland is bigger than others. It's sort of, uh, it it sort of breathes in terms of its size.
But I also didn't mean that in terms of this area is in a flood plain, right?
Yeah.
The whole entire thing. A flood plain that's near the ocean is affected by the tide.
I, I, well.
Right, so if you, if you, if you go there in other areas in Cross Creek and the tide's super high. The lagoon and elsewhere, there may be a large, larger impact. So what I'm more inclined to do here, because I'm very much concerned about this, is to go with like 150 foot buffer.
Well, this is what I'm saying. Here's maybe a way to think about that and figure is is that you say, well, if there's flux and some seasons it's higher and some lower. Like the mean high tide line is not, that when you're talking about the property of what's public and what's private. You don't just say, oh, what's the average tide? You say, what is basically, what is the average of the very high tides? Right, and then so the situation here would be to say.
Over the course of 18 years.
Over 18 years. The situation here would be to somehow say, what, given that it sort of breathes and expands and contracts. You you pick the expansive size and do your 100 feet from there. Right? And maybe, maybe we're saying the same thing, that that would be at 150 feet from.
So, okay. This, this whole thing is way before my time and you, and there's a lot of history here. I've, I found that out, which is the reason I asked my first question to Director Malika. Just fix it. Just put together a great hydroseed mix and spray it. And then it's got everything in it that you want and it'll all grow and then we'll be done.
With or without miracle growth.
I don't think we can use that, but we can't, but you can put together a hydroseed mix and you get out there with the, with the truck and the gun and shoot it. And then get out of here. There's, there's nothing to talk about. You, I agree with you, fix it, fix it.
Let's talk, now you're getting into the restoration and how we do that. Let's kind of try to get a little closer on the delineation part first.
Go, go, go 150 feet, whatever, you're just gonna hydroseed. You're putting way too much time into this. This is too easy.
All right, I I still have plenty of questions, so.
I was gonna make a motion.
Well, we can make the motion, we can put it on the table and keep talking.
Yeah, I'm just gonna make a motion that we go with. I would go with the drawing as is with 150 foot buffer instead of 100.
I second it.
Is there any way that we could get any kind of read on what acreage that becomes? Back of the envelope? I mean, that that might, but by way of having some comparison to like the prior. Is is that more or less than a, than the 2019, 2018 read? We'll leave that with, so you have, we have a. A motion and a second, more discussion. But let's take that under advisement.
But isn't this what you want? I mean, isn't this really what you want?
I have questions and concerns and I want to get things into the record and we may be going there, but you know. It's, it's an early evening still, all right?
But this is really, but in the end, when you get where you are headed for the next, whatever it is. It's right where Skylar and I are, or Commissioner Peak and I are. It's the same thing.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to, you know, parse my notes here and see what's still important and what's not still important.
For for me, I don't have an, I I'm not a, I'm not an expert on boring and a biologist by any means. But I have, my, my challenge is really the fact that it was disc and had it not been disc, you might have had it. We might be looking at something different right now. And it was just over a long, over many years. And there's probably other photos of disking that we haven't even seen. And I'm comfortable with that 150 feet versus the 100 feet to, I think, get us, to get us there and afford hopefully a significant amount more of the. Protection in place for the neighbors that are concerned.
I'd love to hear how much that it's gonna, how many square feet it's gonna be taking up of the parcel by adding that 50 foot.
Maybe there's a way of looking at the map again that we saw and just they've. Is there a map that shows the 100 feet? Because then we can buy, just eyeball what's 50% more of that.
Hydroseed's cheap, guys. There's nothing to this.
This is, okay, so here's, actually, this is the map on our iPads.
It's approximately a half an acre.
And that's, so 150 would be another 50% beyond of that. Now, we don't have that up for the public, though.
Yeah, it's, it's.
There you go. Oh, it was up there for a second. Let's just put up so people know what we're talking about. So that that green area by this proposal would expand another 50%.
You'd probably take most of the the quarter there or the the bottom left of what you're looking at would almost go to the property line.
Okay, well.
It's almost gonna be double the wetland boundaries.
So we've got this on the table, another question, um, just to clarify. I'm, I'm still at the clarifying question level. What, what we heard, I think, from the applicant was that the city has just installed or improved a storm drain that is in effect. Draining this wetland when it reaches a certain capacity? What, what's the interaction of this, the new drain?
It's bypassing the wetlands after it reaches a certain capacity.
So it reaches a certain capacity and the wetland starts flowing out? So it's, it's never gonna get as full as it has gotten at sometimes because the storm drain will be draining it?
No, it just doesn't fill it up anymore.
Put the microphone.
As I understand it, the storm drain will not be filling up the wetlands once it reaches a certain capacity.
I don't think that's what I heard.
And then it goes to, and then it goes to a storm drain after that.
No, the overflow that goes out onto the road where there's a cut in, in, cut off of the road into the property. There's an, it overflows in that area, it has for a long time. The city put a drain further down on the road to deal not only with that, but the other drainage from elsewhere that goes down the road.
But and but effectively limiting how wet the land could get, right?
We should clarify with the consultant.
Yeah, let's, whoever, that that was, Tony, you're the one who mentioned that?
Yes, am I, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can. Can you clarify, is it in fact that the the drain is now sort of draining the peak wetland?
Yeah, so there's always been a drain there at that corner. But but recently, I don't know if it was this year, last year, I remember last year or the year before. At some point, the city did improve that and it, and put in a larger, there's a larger inlet there now. So I'm assuming that they just increased the capacity. But yeah, at at, what happens is that a certain elevation at the, what would be the west end of the wetland. Uh, I'm sorry, the east end of the wetland, when, when the water gets high enough, it just flows out. It goes and goes directly east to that storm drain.
And that's always happened?
Yeah, it's always done that. Yeah, it's just now there's a, there's a better, larger storm drain there. So what happens in a big storm, obviously, the water's coming in faster than it can go out. So the lake could get bigger for a very brief period, like maybe for a couple of days. But at some point, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna hit its equilibrium once enough water drains out. And and that equilibrium line is pretty close to our delineation line. It gets a little bit bigger on the west end, uh, but there's no hydrophytic vegetation there. So, so it didn't, it didn't meet the wetland criteria.
Okay, thank you. All right, I I have some more questions about the actual restoration and how how this is to be done. What first question is, it sounds like, I I just wonder why we're only talking about restoring the buffer. And not the wetland itself, granting that certain invasives may still. Hang on within the wetland, even when their toes in the, in the water. Why are we, are, why are we not just saying, let's clear the invasives out of the whole area? And then I guess the second half of the question is, if the whole site or much more of the site was illegally cleared. Should we not be also clearing invasives off the rest of that?
To my understanding, the actual boundaries of the wetland were not modified. I don't know if Tony can clarify on that. So they're just responding to the code violation, which was within the ESHA buffer. So they're restoring that portion. But just to make clear, sorry, real quick, um, both restoration of an ESHA buffer and the actual ESHA is a permitted use in the LCP.
Okay, so it's, it's actually two separate questions, I guess. The one for Tony is if we're clear, implicitly, there aren't the, no invasives in the actual wetland portion. They're only in the buffer because they won't survive if their, their feet are in the water?
There, there's some non-native species in the wetland.
Yeah.
One primarily, which is called curly dock, which is very common across the Western United States. Otherwise, the wetland doesn't have hardly any non-natives except for the curly dock.
So we should, we should be taking that out of the wetland portion too then, right?
Yeah, and we had discussed that early on. I don't, I think it was determined that we would just focus on the buffer. That could certainly be included if that was a desire. But as far as, I mean, what I can tell you is, you know, what we were directed by the, by the city staff. You know, when we had our very first meeting out here was just to, you know, develop a plan for the 100 foot buffer. And so, so that's what, you know, that's what we did because that's what we were, that was the direction based on the, the code violation letter.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So, so maybe, maybe.
There's no issue with that.
Yeah.
Especially from them, they say they're okay.
Yeah, so the, the curly dock, that's. Pulling the natives out of the entire wetland and buffers. Invasives, I'm sorry, I said, yeah, just destroy the whole area. Now, um, then the second question, I think, is is not so much for Tony, but just for staff again. Why, again, if if more area was cleared that's not wetland and it's not even buffer necessarily, but it has invasives and it was illegally cleared. Why do we not ask them to clear the invasives out of that also?
Or can we do that?
You can do that and from the perspective of the city's code enforcement, if we go after a property owner. There has to be some sort of violation of an ordinance and.
The disking.
There is no ordinance that says disking is prohibited per se.
Well, you can't, you can't clear weeds in an ESHA.
So. Right, so I think we've kind of had that, had that, that back and forth previous. As Director Malika explained, if it's your guys' prerogative, should you feel the desire.
So Chair Hill, I have an idea. Maybe you could put together a volunteer committee and all of you guys with your water boots and you can go out there and get all that invasive species out of there you want. Because as far as I'm concerned, that's not part of the deal. Now, I'm willing to spray this thing and put all, everything back that needs to get back. But if you want to go do that on your own time and 10 of your best friends, go ahead.
There's a group in town that does that already at Point Doom. Okay, so. That's, that's a concern. I don't know that I'm gonna be satisfied about that one, but moving on. Fire safety. ERB's only recommendation, I'm quoting now from the staff report here. Was for the applicant to decrease the amount of shrubs and replace them with native grasses in order to lessen fire fuel load. Now, my take on this, and you know, I've talked to a lot of ecologists and studied it in grad school and so forth. Here, and and in this given context, in this place, the greatest fire hazard is not necessarily the mass of the so-called fuel. It's how fast the fire could spread. And putting in more grasses is spreading a faster fire versus if you had lower shrubs like. You know, uh, coyote brush and and. You know, you don't, and buckwheat, things like that, not necessarily toion and and the bigger things that do present a lot of mass. But if you have small shrubs, that catches embers when they're blowing in the wind and sort of slows them down. Whereas if you put more grass in there, that just gives the fire a speedy route right across the parcel, right, to get to the condos. So, um, hang on one second, let me get the idea out here. So.
Isn't this like most things we do around here, like for like, gotta put it back? Just put it back.
Right, and 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 so the question is, why would they be putting back a lot of grasses when what was.
Because that's what was there.
Growing there would have been more like the native chaparral, which is more, which is shrubbier.
That has, that has a higher fuel load, I think, that burns hotter, that causes the fire to spread. I'm no expert in this, but that causes the fire to spread much hotter and is more dangerous.
So let's, let's hear from Tyler, what if there's discussion about this at ERB?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so I'll just gonna mention that, yes, so, um, it was the fire lia, the, the person who, uh, the ERB commissioner. Who is the fire, I don't know if he's a fire liaison, but he's a, he's a retiree, I believe, of the fire department. And it was his concern that the originally proposed vegetation would create a fuel hazard. Uh, and so it was, it was his recommendation to use the, the lower lying shrubs and native seed mix to mitigate that.
Well, he's, he said grasses, not shrubs.
Yeah, the lower lying stuff.
This is Tony, can I add one thing to that?
Quickly.
Yeah, the, the grasses that we proposed are native bunch grasses. And they don't, they don't, um, carry a fire nearly as much as the annual, you know, the, the kind of annual grassland that you see all over the place with the broom grasses and the. And the oat grasses and all of that. Uh, the, the bunch grasses that we put in are, you know, they're green a good part of the year. And so they're not gonna have the same capacity to carry a fire. And that's, I think that's one of the reasons that those were added.
Okay, that, that's a good answer. Okay, another question, I, I wish, I, I don't think this was you, I think this was somebody on the ERB. As I wrote that, the best method for removing the pompous grass is mechanical means such as weed whack or mowers, chainsaws. Two to four rounds has proven to successfully eliminate pompous grass. That is exactly not my experience, having dealt with this my whole life here and in Big Rock with our neighborhood, having to try to get these invasives out. The more you weed whack that stuff, the, the, it's just.
Spread the weeds.
It's, it's like, you know, um, pruning a rose bush to get it to, to go more. It just, they, they like it. Weed whack them and they grow back faster and they spread faster. And in my experience, the only way to get it out is to just dig it out and it's tough work, but. So I'd like to know who, who is supposedly an expert that said that, that weed whacking is gonna do the job? Was that, that was somebody on the ERB, right? This is a question for staff.
Yes, that is correct. That was an ERB member and I, Tyler, I don't know if I, but exactly, we have to go back and watch the minutes.
The fire liaison again?
No, we have multi-professionals, fire, biologist, wildlife experts. Um, I, I don't remember who, who stated that. I actually don't remember that at all, so I apologize about that.
It just, it contradicts my own experience. If it was an expert and they had a good reason for it, I'd go, oh, okay, but that's, that seems, seems strange.
Chair Hill, this is Tony again.
Yes.
We had our, um, our restoration contractor out last week, actually to start looking at the site. And they agree with you. They recommended that a one-time shot with a very small excavator, you can just pop these things right out and be done.
There you go.
So that was their recommendation.
Can you send them over to our neighborhood when they're done?
Yeah, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, so.
Wanted to have.
Do we need to put that in as a condition or that's? They're saying that's what they want to do. We might need to specify.
Tony, did you add that to the scope of work? Because I don't, I don't recall that specific ERB you mentioned.
The plan is loose and it said, just says that we can use mechanical equipment. It doesn't specify, which we could if, if that was a desire.
How about if we just say removing rather than cutting, trimming or something?
Yeah.
Remove the, remove the root structure, yeah.
Tyler, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not seeing that recommendation in the resolution. So, and so Planning Commission, do please keep in mind, commissioners, that those are, you know, the ERB is not a body that can direct us. They're, they're just making recommendations and it is up to you, just like you're doing here, to say, wait a minute, that recommendation doesn't make sense. I, I don't want to do it. So do feel free to incorporate what the commission here would like as a majority and and not incorporate.
The, the quote that I'm pulling was from PDF page 29. So I don't recall if, and if that's in the resolution or the staff report, but. Anyway, you, you got that? Let's, let's add that as a, a condition.
And to Chair Hill, if you may, so I, and so, because that's, I, I apologize for the confusion. I was frantically searching the resolution and it may, that language may not, may or may not be in there. But as Director Malika said, so the language that I believe yourself and Commissioner Peak, removing the root structure of the, can you just go ahead and, and, you know, elaborate a bit more so I can jot it down?
Uh, Tyler?
I was just gonna, can we add a condition of approval? I think that might be better.
Correct, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm doing.
Yeah, instead of, instead of revising something that's in his plan, I think it'd be better to add a condition of approval that says what, how we want it to be done.
That the invasive be. Removed entirely, including root structure. Which I guess gives them option, however they want to do that mechanically. Let's see what else I. Let's see what else I. Hmm. Oh, and also, again, this is another sort of just technical thing. But in one place I read, speaking to to Genesis point, in one place they said hydroseeding and another place they said ham sowing is preferred. So I'm not sure, do we specify that? Do we care? Do we just let them do what they think is best? We want it to work.
In light of wanting it to work, my only question in regards to the restoration was, what kind of follow up is done?
That well, OK, that's my next question. But so on the question of how they how they do the seeding, hydroseeding, sowing by hand? Do we? Tyler, you might have an idea whether there's one of those is more or let's ask Tony. Tony? Did you understand my question?
Yeah, totally. We can do both are effective. Both work well. I think we were trying to I hope, I mean, I'd rather have the flexibility for our restoration team to when they come out to make the call that that's easiest and most effective because both because we're going to be planting some container plants. We reduce the container plants and are going more with seed. But we could do either. Again, they both work. But the challenge to hydroseed here is getting a truck in. Because, as you know, that takes a large truck. And and so hand seeding may be better because of access.
OK, so what you guys just you just want to let them do what they want to do or you?
No, I'm I'm fine with that. I just I think we should just come back to they make the call on that. There's no issue with that. And then I would just like to see, hopefully, the plants do well and the invasives can get removed. But I'd like to see the city with some kind of like a five-year follow up on this.
Yeah, and well, and and this is Drew had basically the same or similar question about the maintenance. What we have in here now written in is that a 10-year maintenance. And so the question is, how much do we need or want to specify what that means? You know, do they have to come out and pull invasives every two months? Or do they come out once a year? Or what is what is the character of the?
I think annually.
I mean, annually, yeah. I mean, I'm trying to pull invasives at my house 24/7 and I never succeed. Tony?
The plant the plant has performance standards. So so we have to reduce based on the performance standards, you know, the weeds to, I think it's about 10% overall by the end of the 10-year monitoring and maintenance period. So the maintenance crews are out, you know, during the first few years, they're probably out there every couple of months because that's the only way to get a handle on these weeds. And then as as time goes and you get you get a better handle on the weeds, the maintenance, you know, maybe goes to every, you know, maybe quarterly. And then by the time you're at the end, it's maybe once or twice a year. So so but it's hit hard at the beginning. We're out there every couple of months.
OK.
If I may jump in, Chair, condition 17 of your resolution requires an annual report, which that gets submitted to the city and reviewed. That gets reviewed by the city biologist. And then condition 22 requires maintenance and identifies that it would be considered a violation if the applicant fails to maintain the landscape per the conditions of approval and the and the plant, the restoration plan.
Awesome. Can we get are we ready for a roll call?
OK, can I just ask, did we get to any back of the envelope number on how much acreage we're now talking about?
Approximately 25,000 square feet.
Approximately 25.
Just doubling up the area.
So we're so the proposal is in effect to go from, what was it? 1.8 was the original?
1.69, double would be about three, over three.
We're not doubling the buffer. We said 150, not 200.
But that because it's there's a concentric factor, so it's.
Would probably add around 25 to 35,000 square feet. So you'd be pushing yourself over two acres.
So, yeah, maybe two and a half acres. All right, so we're talking about approximately two and a half acres. I don't know if we need to more you've got the number, the 150. So, yeah. All right. Other questions, concerns? OK.
And so Chair, just want to be sure.
Oh, yeah.
I have the motion as approval. I'll be very, very quick. The first kind of policy choice for which I've, you know, first of all, of course, we're extending the the buffer from the 100 to the 150 feet line. And then the removal of non-natives in the wetland area, we're going to add that to condition number 23. All we're going to do, we're going to leave it as drafted. We're going to add the following language. In addition, all non-native plants shall be removed from the wetland area boundary as delineated in the revised HRMP dated January 2024. The next direction involves the total removal of the invasive plants. It was kind of discussed in section, excuse me, condition number 15. In its entirety, it will now read, all invasive plants removed as either part of the site preparation, ongoing maintenance, or as required by this resolution, shall be removed entirely, including the root structure. All removed plants must be immediately bagged and the seeds, seed heads, will not be left out and all invasive plant debris shall be hauled offsite.
OK, yeah, I think that sounds good. Yeah. All right, I think we're at a roll call here then.
Can we get confirmation from the maker and seconder that they are accepting them?
Maker, seconder.
Yeah, thank you.
And you're accepting both conditions?
Yes, second.
Commissioner? Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and we'd like to adjourn in the name of.
Adjourn this evening's meeting in the memory of our good friend Matt Raff. And that's R A P F.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Everybody stay dry, stay safe. Don't drive through any big puddles.